Watching for the light. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you everyone for being here for the January ninth City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to call on Ward One, Councilman Matt Smith, to open us in prayer.
May we bow heads. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for our mayor, Heavenly Father. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for our city workers and our great council. Heavenly Father, I ask you, Heavenly Father, to work with us as a council that we can come together in your eye, Heavenly Father, to do what's right for this community, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, I ask you, Heavenly Father, to watch over us, Heavenly Father, and give us good health, Heavenly Father. In all these blessings, in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. We stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance is that the flag is the United States of America, is the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. I have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Here, just a second.
Councilmember Stallins.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Bogard.
Here.
Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Droul.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
All righty. Item five, awards and recognition. Now, we will give a couple of awards away here and say thank you. We have some gentlemen in the audience this evening. It's been very giving to the city of Hopkinsville, and we would like to say thank you to them, to our police department and our fire department. I would like to call Dr. Bessias to the front for his plaque and say thank you from the city of Hopkinsville for all you do for us. Thank you, sir. On behalf of the city, we would like to call Dr. Patel to the front for all he done for us with our boxes that we put out in the parks. If he would come on down here, Dr. Patel, thank you. Now, in item six, we have public comments. If anyone would like to come and speak at the podium, please state your name and address for the city. Anyone would like to come and speak?
Thank you all. My name is John Helsley, and my office is located at sixteen twenty South Main Street. Just so y'all know where I'm at, my residence is three ten James Landry. I wanted just to briefly, I know y'all have a lot of things on your agenda tonight, but briefly go over an ordinance that's going to be before you all that has to do with our family farm. It's item B. So again, I talked with most of you all already, and I appreciate your time. I'm from Hopkinsville, born and raised, optometrist here. The parcel of property that the ordinance concerns is our family farm. It's been our farm since, been our family since the forties. And what this is, it's a proposal for the initial zoning. So when that piece of property was annexed in the city, it was not zoned at that time. And how we got here was CDS approached us a little over a year ago to zone that piece of property. And I won't belabor you with all the detail because I know that you all had a whole lot of that in your packets and things like that. But the proposal is for split zoning that includes I-1, AT-1, and B-4 designations as it moves from west to east on the piece of property. Going back to the CDS staff report and recommendations on the proposal, a few things I wanted to go over with you is, one, that it was in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan. Two, it was justified by recent economic and fiscal changes. And three, it was consistent with the established development and zoning patterns for the city. Okay? And through the zoning process, we worked with CDS and real estate experts to come up with that plan for you. And also through that process and feedback from neighbors like the airport, we've entered into discussions with them about air easements for the airspace above our property to ensure that they have adequate approaches into and out of the airport runways. Okay? And so really, those are just the highlights that I wanted to refresh your all's memory from our conversation. So appreciate your time and appreciate your consideration on that.
Thank you, Mr. Helsley. Anyone else in this audience like to speak at public comments? Strong ones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody's well. I guess I need to first start out and say just thank you for, thank the city of Hopkinsville, the lineman that was out and made sure we all had power. I didn't lose mine, but I'm still having some issues with the coldness, but you know, I'll overcome that. But I know somebody else is probably in a worse situation than I am yet. So hats off to the lineman here in town. A couple of things I need to talk about. First, I want to, again, I want to, I want to thank Ms. Ferguson, the mayor, Rogers, Peyton Rogers, Mr. Gilliam, and Newby. Thank them for helping me get a hold of, well, you guys got a hold of the people that, or the person that dumped some tires on my property. So I appreciate you guys taking care of that. And to that, I'll tell Mr. Peyton, get the guys quit looking in my yard, and maybe they need to go through the bushes and take care of that and no worry about what's in my yard. Okay? Somebody tell him that.
I'll tell him that.
All right, we're good. Quarry Road, I see that the city has been cutting down some brush on Quarry Road on twenty first. But on Quarry Road, coming off of Ninth Street, when you come around, there's no rail there. So I'm thinking that probably going to be an issue that, well, what's y'all's plan of trying to put a rail, a guard, or something right there? If somebody could follow up with that for me. Got a call on snow removal. Again, you know, they did pretty good, and I've been living where I've been living for a long time, and I've never had anybody come up and throw salt. And this time they did that, and I said, my God, I gotta go to work because I'm able to get out. So on that street there, you really ain't got to come there, okay? Let that go. Okay? But it is what it is. That tells me that they're doing the job, so I appreciate that. But I got a call on asking about what the procedures are, what the order of removing snow on Woodmeal, Dirt Avenue, and Nineteenth Street. And no certain order, but if somebody could just follow up with that and let me know how we need to do that or how it needs to be done. Then also, I've been riding around because work never stops, is some of our road signs in Ward Nine, you can't read them. Well, same my area, it's a day to end, but I guess what it is, the, it's been there so long, it needs to be shined up, cleaned, or removed or replaced. So I'd like to see that, well, again, everything that I'm asking, I just need follow up. So somebody, anybody, don't matter who you got twelve, so it doesn't matter, somebody can just follow up and see if we can get that taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak at public comments this evening? Floor is open. All righty. We'll move into item seven, Mayor's comments. Welcome to the new council. Thank each and every one of you for being here. Thank you for we willing to serve. I know you're new at it. You'll be thinking me, Mayor, why did I take this job here in a couple of months? So, but no. Thank you all for be willing to serve and listen to our constituents here in Hopkinsville and see what we can do to move the Hopkinsville better and to a better and brighter place for our future, for our children and grandchildren on that. Thank you to the linemen. I know they were out. Thank you to Public Works. Appreciate all Mike and Screw them did. Me and Mike had a few conversations, how everything was going, and they really done a great job. My hats off to them. They done a great job. Also, to the police department and fire department that were out there going through it, you know, you don't think it's that bad. You get in a hurry and try to stop real quick, and that black ice grabs a hold of you. And, but I appreciate them and thank them all for what they're doing. Our firefighters, our paramedics, and our department and our public works. Thank you all so much for what you do on that. Thank you to the so very much brighter and better place. And be careful. And we will keep you updated as made, which committee and guest speakers, and we have no reports to be given tonight. We'll move into approval of minutes on item nine on December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
Motion.
Don and Amy. On that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, that passes. Thank you. Now, we'll move into item ten, ordinances. Ordinance one dash twenty twenty-five, Chapter thirty-one, meeting, first reading. And Brittany, if you'll read that, and then we'll have a discussion.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter thirty-one of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to City Council and Committee of the Whole meetings. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, section thirty-one point one five of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. Thirty-one point one five, time and place. A regular meetings of the legislative body shall be held for the first and third Tuesday of each month at the municipal building at five o'clock PM local time. The place, date, and time of a regularly scheduled meeting of the legislative body may be changed by either the presiding officer or majority of the members of the legislative body not less than five calendar days prior to the meeting. However, if the date or time are changed, the meeting is deemed a special called meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act and subsequent rulings. B, a special meeting may be called at any time by the presiding officer or majority of the members of the legislative body by personally delivering, faxing, emailing, or mailing written notice to each member of the legislative body and to each newspaper or general circulation and to the media organization which has filed properly written requests to receive notifications of meetings. Notice must be delivered at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. C, notice is not required if the special meeting is called to deal with an emergency. Section two, section thirty-one point twenty-three of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. Thirty-one point twenty-three committees. A, the council shall meet as a committee of the whole each month on Thursday following the regular city council meeting at five o'clock PM at the municipal building. The presiding officer shall be elected by majority vote of the committee of the whole. B, a special committee may be created by the legislative body to study any problem and shall report to the body as directed. C, a committee composed wholly or in part of citizens who are not members of the legislative body may be created by the presiding officer with the approval of a majority of the members of the legislative body to study any public issue. Section three, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section four, in all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
The reason, I've talked to just about everybody in here for this, and for me asking to do this, was just like tonight, we said, you know, we got in here and done our business, what we had to do. But our staff has to hang out later in the evening. And part of our staff gets paid of it, part of them don't get paid of it. Some of them are on salary, some are. Some of them get to use it as comp time or vice versa. I was asking to do that for the staff reason only. Now, I'll leave that up to you and how y'all decide. And I call on Mr. Don Marsh. He had his hand up.
So that we can have discussion, I'll make a motion to accept the amendment of the ordinance.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second by Amy. All righty, any discussion now?
Not really a discussion, Mayor, just a question. Normally, we bring new business to the council of the whole.
Right.
But on the business list, it goes through the council of the whole.
Mm-hmm.
To my knowledge, this didn't go through that process.
No, sir, it did not.
Why did we not go through that process?
Because I'm trying to get it set now before we get to the committee of the whole in three weeks, in two weeks. That way, we start the year out at five o'clock across the thing. We got to have two readings. That's the reason I didn't go to committee of the whole with it. That way, we could start it out and have the readings. And then committee of the whole would start at five o'clock, and in February, we start at five o'clock on that.
My only thinking is, and I don't care either way, I'm good either way. So, but I haven't had time to talk to anybody in the public.
And on the public side of this, where we
That's part of it, too. I mean, you know, there's
The public comment part of it, we were going to move down to like item thirteen into it, till people got adjusted to the time and so on. So we knew nobody missed public comments. I wanted the public to make sure they were still heard. You know, like right now, we're fifteen minutes in. Public comments would not make it at five o'clock sometimes. So we move it into, down to thirteen. It gives people time to get here and it still have conversations about what has to go on. Yes, Ms. Amy?
My question is really more for the council, since this isn't going before committee of the whole at this point. I think this was, I know this has been brought up at least one other time, maybe twice. I can't remember. It all blends together. And the reason why we didn't change it in the past is because there were council members that had work conflicts and could not be here at five.
Right.
And so I didn't talk to everybody. I know you did. But I guess my question for everybody in this room is, is there anybody that does have a conflict? Because if a council member has a conflict, I don't think we should move the time.
Right.
So that was my question.
And if they do have a conflict, we can stay at six o'clock, but that's up to y'all.
But if anybody has a conflict, I mean, you need to like speak up so that we're not making your life difficult.
Right. We don't want to make your life difficult.
I mean, my business closes at five. It's not going to make it difficult. I mean, it's only three meetings, but like he was saying, though, we just hadn't heard about it. So just if we had discussion prior, I mean, I know I can schedule.
Right.
Those days, I can schedule a hit of time. So I can still make it. But it's just the point that my business did close at five, and I hadn't heard about changing it to five. But it's not going to be a life or death type thing, though.
Okay. Travis?
Have we gotten any feedback from the public?
No, not really. No, we have not.
This will affect them as well. I know, say we move them to whatever, item thirteen, well, what if we vote on something that they're here to talk about?
That's the reason I was trying to wait, get this in a vance right now. So when we go start the new business list, when we start, because basically, what you're going to be doing tonight, and then on the next council meeting, I'll be second reading on what we done tonight only. You know, there will probably be no new business unless it's some kind of emergency business that we had to bring up and discuss. So when we start that, they'll know what's on the business list and what we'll be moving forward if we're not going to do it the first of the year instead of waiting on it.
And the next issue I had was, we, we didn't know anything about this until last week.
Right.
It came out in the agenda, and then we started squirming, trying to figure out what's going on. So I don't know that we've had enough time to get information from us, from the public, to be able to vote on this tonight. That's my only, that's my only issue.
I agree.
Well, we can do it however y'all want to do it. It ain't going to hurt my feelings either way.
And it, it might be the right thing to do. I mean, if we, if we put it out on, say we put it on our Facebook page, Amanda or whatever puts it out there, we look at comments, see what the public has to say. And if it's, if it doesn't bother anybody, the public, then maybe it's the right thing to do. I mean, but I think we need to listen first.
Don?
Couple of things. Is the agenda that we have set by ordinance?
Yes.
The time is
Time is set by ordinance.
So the agenda would have to be changed by ordinance as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, the reasoning that you set forth was the savings that we might have of both human resources and finances for the city, which I'm all for saving as much as we possibly can and making it easier on our staff.
Yeah, their time.
You know, if they want to, you know, go to one of their kids' ball games or whatever they have.
Right.
Go home after a long day. I had asked, how much of an actual savings is that going to give us in dollar amounts or with, I don't know, comp time or whatever, say, in the course of a year?
I do not have that in front of us. Melissa doesn't have that neither yet.
Well, I'm sure she doesn't have it.
No, I don't. Me and hers talked about it. She does not have it yet on that.
It wouldn't be surprising to me if she did know that. But I would just say to you that, yeah, it'd be interesting to know how much of a savings that
Well, if y'all want to table this to committee of the whole, we can table this committee of the whole.
I'll make the motion. We send it back to committee of the whole. Again, I think it might be the right thing, but I think we need to do some more research.
I second it.
And get our ducks in a row.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, send it to committee of the whole. On that, we got to have a roll call for that, correct, Brittany?
Yes, we would.
Can we make sure that everybody understands what we're voting on since our minds are known?
Right. What we're voting, we'll
We're going to vote to see if this goes to committee of the whole prior to the reading of the
Further discussion.
For further discussion.
Right.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Stallins.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard. Councilmember Velez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Droul.
Yes.
And that does pass to take it to committee of the whole.
All right. We will take that. It will be on the committee of the whole business list here. Okay? All righty. Ordinance two dash twenty twenty-five, Helsley Farm, zoning.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, zone three hundred and sixty-six acres of property located at thirty-six forty-five Russellville Road. Whereas Community and Development Services made a favorable recommendation at their November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting for City Council to approve zoning application R-two-four dash ten dash one, as filed by the applicant John Helsley, Helsley Farms J and R LLC. And whereas the applicant is requesting that a hundred and eleven acres of the property be zoned I-one light industrial district, two hundred and forty-one acres of the property be zoned AT-one agricultural transitional district, and fourteen acres of the property be zoned B-four arterial commercial district. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendations are in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zonings. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS one hundred point two eleven, Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services recommendation dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, a three hundred and sixty-six acre property located at thirty-six forty-five Russellville Road at the southwest corner of the intersection of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Way and Russellville Road identified as parcel ID one-three-nine oh-oh-oh-oh-oh-four dot oh-oh, as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, is hereby zoned I-one light industrial district, AT-one agricultural transitional district, and B-four arterial commercial district. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Seconds.
I've got Don, and I've got Travis. On that, any discussion? All right, call, call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard.
Yes.
Councilmember Velez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Droul.
Yes.
And that passes on first reading.
All right. And we have municipal order, item eleven. Municipal order one dash twenty twenty-five surplus property.
Whereas the attached listed property was purchased for use by the Public Works Department, and whereas said items are in need of repair exceeding current value and/or of no value to the city in delivering public services. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the items on the attached list surplus property and authorizes the mayor to dispose of said items by methods available in KRS eighty-two point oh-eight three.
Any discussion? All right. The order twenty dash twenty twenty-five, Housing Authority Board.
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Jason Bell shall be appointed as the mayor's designee to the Housing Authority of Hopkinsville Board. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and we do need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Don and Amy, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All righty, thank you. Any opposed? No, both. All right. Executive Order oh-three twenty twenty-five, City Board Appointments.
Effective immediately, City Councilmembers shall be appointed to the following. Hopkinsville Christian County Ambulance Service Board, Mike Velez, Michael Velez. Christian County Senior Center Board, Brandy Stallins. Hopkinsville Christian County ECC Board, Clayton Sumner. Hopkinsville and Christian County Airport Board, Seth Meek. Human Rights Commission, Elizabeth Droul. Hopkinsville Christian County Public Library Board, Brittany Bogard. Long Range Planning and Coordination Committee, Brandy Stallins. Penny R. R. Sandy Council, Brittany Bogard. Retired Senior Volunteers Program Council, Donald Marsh. Tax Increment Finance Development Authority, Seth Meek. Westwood Senior Home Board, Brandy Stallins. These terms shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and there's no action necessary on that one.
Okay. Executive Order oh-four dash twenty twenty-five, Board of Appeals.
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Travis Martin shall be appointed to the Board of Appeals created by Chapter one-ten of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. No action is necessary.
Okay. Executive Order oh-five dash twenty twenty-five, Cable TV Oversight Authority.
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Vance Smith shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Cable Television Oversight Authority. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and we do need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Executive Order oh-six twenty twenty-five, Christian County Weather Spotters.
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Crabtree shall be reappointed as the mayor's designee to the Christian County Weather Spotters Board. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. No action is necessary.
All righty, thank you. Executive Order oh-seven dash twenty twenty-five, Hopkinsville Electric Board.
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Amy Craig shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Electric System Board. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and we do need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Travis and Don. All right. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Executive Order 08-2025, Hopkinsville Solid Waste Environment Board, Enterprise Board?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Chuck Crabtree shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board. This term shall expire December 31, 2025, and we do need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Amy?
Second.
Don, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Executive Order 09-2025, Hopkinsville Water Environmental Authority Board?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Jason Bell shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Water Environment Authority. This term shall expire December 31, 2025, and we do need a motion in a second.
Motion. Don?
Second.
Second by Travis? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Executive Order 10-2025, Christian County Chamber of Commerce Military Affairs?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Donald Marsh shall be appointed as the mayor's designate to the Christian County Chamber of Commerce Military Affairs Committee. This term shall expire December 31, 2026, no action is necessary.
Okay. Executive Order 11-2025, Hopkinsville Christian County Industrial Development Authority?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Seth Meek shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Christian County Industrial Development Authority. This term shall expire December 31, 2026, and no action is necessary.
Executive Order 12-2025, Western Hills Municipal Golf Course Board?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Vance Smith shall be appointed to the Western Hills Municipal Golf Course Board. This term shall expire December 31, 2026, no action is necessary on that one either.
All righty. Executive Order 13-2025, Little River Water Quality Consortium?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Jason Bell shall be reappointed to the Little River Water Quality Consortium. This term shall expire December 31, 2026, and we do need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Motion, Mike?
Second.
Second by Chuck. All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Executive Order 14-2025, Penny Rouse Solid Waste Management?
Effective immediately, City Councilmembers Donald Marsh and Clayton Sumner shall be appointed to the Penny Rouse Solid Waste Management Authority. These terms shall expire December 31, 2026, and we do need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Brandy, second by Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no, I thought there was one, my one
Somebody shooting.
One in every crowd.
I wanted every crowd. Well, at least he waited, we were just about done, anyway.
I scared me.
Seems so, mate. All right, broke momentum. Executive Order 15-2025, Southwestern Economic Development Authority?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Michael Velez shall be appointed to the Southwestern Kentucky Economic Development Council to fill the unexpired term of City Councilmember Travis Martin. This term shall expire June 30, 2025, and there's no action necessary.
Okay. And Executive Order 16-2025, Surface and Stormwater Utility Board?
Effective immediately, City Councilmember Travis Martin shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Surface and Stormwater Utility Board. This term shall expire on December 31, 2025, and we do need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Got Amy, I got Don, and any discussion? Okay, I had to make sure Don didn't jump on me.